Okay, by my clock it's 6:30 and time for us to reconvene. First of all, we need to come out of closed session.
I'll take care of that.
Okay.
I move that the city council members certify by a recorded vote that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
Second?
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, actually, we have to do this by roll call. Beg your pardon. Ms. Thomas?
Councilor McGill?
Yes.
Councilor Payne?
Yes.
Councilor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes five nothing. Next on the agenda is boards and commissions. Do we have a motion regarding boards and commissions?
I would move to reappoint Laura Goldplatte to the Charlottesville Redevelopment and Housing Authority as well as to appoint, one second.
Dr. Aaron Mills.
Dr. Aaron Mills to the Thomas Jefferson Water Resources Protection Foundation Board.
Is there a second to those two nominations?
Second.
Ms. Thomas?
Councilor McGill?
Yes.
Councilor Payne?
Yes.
Councilor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes five nothing. And just so folks will understand, there are still two vacancies on the CRHA board, which we will take up after we have, as we are required to do by statute, by ordinance, after we have interviewed the applicants. And so that will be taken up in September. We are, let's see, coming to, going through our little agenda here, we should be, we should have begun the 6:30 PM business meeting with a moment of silence. Let's have a moment of silence, please. Counselors, any announcements?
Yeah, I wanted to make one briefly.
Okay.
I just wanted to thank the Clergy Collective for their efforts on Friday night in the commemoration of the August 11th and 12th, 2017 events. The Clergy Collective had something they called Unite the Light, and it was basically two parts. The first part was a march, a walk from First Baptist Church through a couple of different stations, and we ended up on Heather Highway. And then the second event was at Mount Zion Church, and there was an interfaith service there. And it was a very, both events were very well put together, well attended, and very special, I thought.
I agree, and I was, both of them as well. And I would also like to say, because we, we had some discussion of this over the last month, that one of the things that I had, had been assuming, and it turns out to have been a valid assumption, Charlottesville is a community of a lot of intelligent and creative people, and we saw a lot of their creativity and intelligence on display in the past week or so, starting with Isaiah Amos, but not limited to him, Wes Bellamy, Jelaine Schmidt, the Clergy Collective, the soul of Seaville is another example of something that was going on this weekend that, it had been my, my hope, quite frankly, that if the city got out of the way, that the voice of the people would be able to be expressed on its own terms. And I think that that happened to a large extent, and I thought that that, that things went, went very well for the, really for the entire weekend.
You have a couple of, one, I just want to thank the counselors and the city for, I was away for a couple of meetings, I was doing some incredible mission work with my church in, in Gumbala, Ethiopia. It was, it was great. It was just beautiful to be in Africa doing that work with a church. But it was good to get home, to see my family, and get back to the city business. It was a great, some activities that take place, took place over the last couple of weeks was West Haven Day. That was a lot of work that was done to pull that together, and also participated in the Greenstone on Fifth, and that was, and also another incredible opportunity to, for different city agencies and nonprofits to come out. And Friday, I was able to help with the unveiling of the Mr. Brown's, Reverend Brown's street naming sign over on Rossar, and to do a welcome to a lot of out of town guests that was visiting Charlottesville. So it was just incredible time. And also, our tourism board got recognized for its effort to promote black businesses, and here in town, it was recognized nationally, competing against some really big cities and things. And so, just really incredible work that we're doing to promote all of our businesses here in Charlottesville. So, thank you.
Vice Mayor, I'm really glad you brought that up. I was gonna bring that as well. Again, wanted to say thank you to the Charlottesville community, and Isaiah's photographs are incredibly powerful, and I hope everyone has a moment to go and experience them. I also just wanted to address a few things that came up after our last meeting in general. This is outside of some very particular, one-on-one issues, but I know people have been feeling a little bit unheard. I do want to assure people that, I take notes about what everyone says, so I can refer back to it and I can remember it more easily. And it does factor into how I vote and how I ask staff to pursue various projects, policies. Some of them, we can't always talk about publicly, I know, because they have to do with various, either employment issues or budgetary issues that would put us in a bad bargaining position. Some of the concerns I've definitely been hearing are about rent and mortgage relief coming forward. This is one reason we have put significant ARPA dollars repeatedly into this, and we'll keep looking at that. That there's also concern, I heard, about those being housing challenged as we look towards the 50th anniversary of the downtown mall. And so we will make sure to, that that is kept in mind, and that equity issue is kept in mind, and that those who are housing challenged aren't, run afoul of the law or something.
Well, let's see, so, next, proclamation for the Kiwanis Club of Charlottesville. Mr. Hart, you with us? So, I have been asked to prepare a proclamation, which I'm glad to do, for basically any organization that's been doing good work for a hundred years or more deserves some recognition. Whereas the Kiwanis Club of Charlottesville, founded in April 1922, is celebrating its 100th year of service, called Serving the Children of the World, 1922 to 2022. Whereas Kiwanis International was founded in Detroit, Michigan, in 1915, as a global organization of volunteers dedicated to improving the world, one child and one community at a time. There are over 200,000 adult Kiwanians and more than 325,000 adult, uh, family members, Kiwanis family members in 80 countries and geographic areas around the world. And whereas Kiwanis has been a pioneer in empowering community volunteers dedicated to tackling local and international community issues, especially those that affect young children and youth. And whereas Kiwanis International's most recent world service project, in conjunction with UNICEF, helped to eliminate maternal and neonatal tetanus from the face of the earth. This project followed Kiwanis International's previous successful project, also with UNICEF, of ridding the world of iodine deficiency disorders, the leading preventable cause of intellectual disabilities worldwide. And whereas Kiwanis is perhaps best known for its service leadership programs currently with key clubs at four local high schools, the Circle K International, CKI Club at the University of Virginia, and an Action Club at Innisfree Village, more than 300 youth are members of these clubs. And whereas the Kiwanis Club of Charlottesville is committed to serving the children and youth of the community through volunteer projects, civic engagement, fundraising, and leadership development, Kiwanians and Kiwanis family leaders have been giants of service and leadership in this community for more than a third of the span of this community's history. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Charlottesville hereby proclaims August 29th, 2022, as Kiwanis Club of Charlottesville Day in celebration of this milestone centennial year. Signed and dated this 15th day of August 2022, Lloyd Snook, Mayor. And let me also add, as a central Little League coach of many years' standing, Kiwanis has always had an excellent Little League team in the Central Little League, and my guys could never beat y'all. So, Mr. Hart, let me give you this proclamation, and, and thank you for the, the service that Kiwanis Club members give to our community, and we wish you a successful 100th anniversary.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Counselors.
Thank you for coming to see us.
Appreciate your, your attention to this matter, and.
Have a good celebration.
Thank you very much.
So, next item, consent agenda. Ms. Thomas, would you read the consent agenda, please?
Consent agenda, number two, minutes, July 8th. Three, ordinance, 415, 10th Street Northwest, rezoning from R1S to B2, second reading. Four, ordinance, 415 and 415B, 10th Street Northwest, designation of property as an individually protected property, second reading. Five, resolution, refund of business license tax, $5,719.45, one of two readings. Six, resolution, Virginia Homeless Solutions Program, grand award, $539,369, one of two readings.
Thank you. So we will now take public comment regarding items on the consent agenda that were just raised, that were just read by the clerk. Each speaker will have up to three minutes in the Zoom webinar. You can select the raise hand option to be placed in the speaker queue. If you're joining us by phone and wish to speak on the consent agenda, you can press star nine, and we'll alternate in-person and virtual speakers. This is only for the, just the few items that were just read to us, the old minutes, the 415, 10th Street Northwest, the refund of a business license tax item, and the homeless solutions program. And if you are signed up on the Community Matters signup list, your time will come in a few minutes, but not right now. So is there anybody in the council chamber who would like to speak on one of those consent agenda items? Yes, ma'am?
Rosia Parker. It was very disheartening this weekend to actually be on the downtown mall and to see so much people that are houseless with mental illness, and to see how they react, and especially some of the ones that just came home, that have been locked up 20 and 30 years. And there's really no help with Regent Ten or any other mental establishments right now. It needs to be something from the city where people that already have mental health issues or can be taught and trained how to help other people, like peer recovery specialists, which I have become, to be able to help the community of mental health. We don't have a lot of those type of people in our community. I think there should be money allocated to different trainings for this, because to see these people down there, I mean, I sat down in and I cried. I cried for hours. I used to be homeless for five years with my kids, so I really know how it feels to be houseless with mental illness, to be discriminated against, to be oppressed and suppressed. So I see this in my people out there. I feed them, I talk to them, I've chased them, I've even helped with the Haven, I've done so much with the homeless, houseless. And it's time for the city to do something. These people are laying right here in front of City Hall, in every corner that you look at. Charlottesville is not meant, built for that, and there's a lot more that is gonna come. I've been trying to warn Charlottesville for years, right here in this chamber, for what was to come. But people want to be personal. It's not about personal with me, it's about fighting for humanity and the right people that are supposed to work for the people, not just feel that your personal and profession is not in place, because people put you there. This is taxpayers' money. So something needs to be done for the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Is there anyone, are there any virtual speakers? We'll be alternating in-person and virtual if there, if there's more than one. Any virtual speakers who wish to address the consent agenda?
Mayor Snook, I see no raised hands.
Is there anyone else in person here who would like to speak on a consent agenda item? Okay, I see nothing, I see no one standing up at this point.
Mayor Snook, Joy Johnson has just raised her hand.
Ah, okay, Ms. Johnson, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Um, yeah, good evening, my name is Joy Johnson. The, the home, the Haven and Patcham is put in place to help navigate some of their homeless people, but there are some barriers that needs to be, be broken down in both of those Trying to get people through the IMS, I think that's what they call it, you have to get them into that system through the Haven, and then it's left into Patcham's hand. But there is a barrier, because either, you know, one person is saying, this is, you need to do this to be able to get to here, and when they do this to get to there, when they get to there, they can't get to that. And so I think you need to, it's a challenge for people, the homelessness people, or people who are homeless or houseless, new word, Rosita, hats off to you, is that there, there are barriers that are keeping people from utilizing some of these programs, and I think it's time that you all take a, take a good look at what is in place, so that more people can funnel through those systems. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. I note that this, this grant award that we're talking about here includes, as one of the, one of the, the items that's being provided, is the Homeless Management Information System, the HMIS system that Ms. Johnson referred to. Anyway, anyone else who wishes to speak either in-person or online?
So, is, this is minor, I know that the term that we're using now apparently is unhoused, and sometimes, you know, I think we're kind of going through the transition now, and, and if the document says homeless, maybe as we finalize, it can say unhoused. It's just a minor.
The grant itself is called the Virginia Homeless Solutions Program, so I think we're sort of stuck with that name, at least as we deal with the grant itself. How we use the term house, homeless, I, I don't know, when it says Homeless Management Information System.
That's HMIS.
Is that something that is uniquely ours that we can rename?
That is a federal program.
Okay. Also not an option for us, then. Thank you. I would just like to offer one comment, and that is that the, the memo that we received explaining what all of this is all about includes language that says, under community engagement, "This partnership is reflective of the new governance model for the Blue Ridge Area Coalition for the Homeless and the propriety, and the priority requests of the interfaith movement promoting action by congregations together," otherwise known as IMPACT. I was curious about this. The same language appeared back in January, and I was curious about it then, too, and I asked, there is not, in fact, a new governance model. And what we're seeing here is the recycling of the same document that needs to get edited a little bit, so we're not going to be confused to think that every six months we've got a new governance model. It doesn't really matter to the long term, because it's not, that language does not appear in the resolution, but it is something that I think we ought to, ought to clarify, because if somebody looks at this some, sometime down the road and says, hey, what's the new government, governance model? We don't have one. Doesn't require any amendment or anything, but that's just a, a point I wanted to make. Any other questions or comments from council? So, do we have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I would move that we adopt and approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further questions? Ms. Thomas?
Councilor McGill?
Yes.
Councilor Payne?
Yes.
Councilor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes five nothing to adopt the consent agenda. Thank you. Mr. Rogers, would you like to present the report from the city manager's office?
Yes, we have provided you a written report last meeting. Did, did a verbal report that contained a lot of, a lot of issues, but we, we're back to our standard report. We'll give you at least one, you know, per month. The one thing I'd like to highlight is the fact that our police chief search is underway. Reported last week that we had a, a link on our webpage to a community survey, and a number of people have taken advantage of that. The deadline was, was initially advertised as tonight, August 15th. I want to announce now that we will extend the deadline until next Monday night and give people opportunity to go on. You can find the link on the charlottesville.gov website, it's in one of the banners, just click on it and it'll take you directly to the, the Polyhire webpage where the survey, where the survey is. It's confidential, and we encourage people to really tell us what you think, you know, what do you want to see in your new police chief? You know, what are the issues you want your new police chief to, to address in this job? What we, what should we be asking them in terms of, to assure that they are focused on, on our issues? So we very much encourage as many people as, as can possibly be to go to the website and take the survey. There are a number of other issues there that I won't highlight tonight. The Convention and Visitors Bureau, Black Seaville issue has, recognition has already been, been recognized. I was gonna cite that, that's, I think that's a very good thing for the community. And I think Sam Saunders had some, had an update on the, the school community walkway issue.
Great. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Rogers, thank you, council. I just wanted to give the community an update on Safe Routes to Schools work. We continue with the internal team working to, work with the school leadership on prioritizing their list for improvements that are all aimed at ensuring safe routes with the expansion of walking zones. I just wanted to share with you progress report from the Public Service Division. They have been hard at work getting all the preparations done. 61 intersections have been striped to date, 12 of those were brand new, and we'll have another 11 of those crosswalks done this week. Eight more still being planned, so we'll be able to get those done before school starts. In addition to a wide array of new signings going up along the routes, there've been some installations of flex posts at multiple intersections to try to help slow traffic down, and we've also done some work with CAT, getting information out in regards to Route 9 and how it can support students who might be able to ride the bus to Walker and CHS with the support of parent groups that have been working to identify how they can safely ride the buses back and forth to school. We've adjusted some signal timing at multiple intersections, including the addition of no turn on red when pedestrians are present. That's something that we've had the ability to do at different times, but we've added a few more of those in areas that we've heard from schools, just the reports of some serious interactions with cars as people have been trying to cross the roads. And we have a series of additional items that we'll be bringing before council at your September 6 meeting. Some of those include some speed limit reductions, as well as making a change to how we're making a four-way stop temporarily at Rugby and Rose Hill as an intervention. That intersection's gonna be getting a new signal project in October, but based on a lot of the inquiries that we've had in regards to that intersection, we're thinking we may be able to go ahead and temporarily install a four-way stop at that intersection. I understand that it might be a little controversial, as it's been a problem in the past, so we want to make sure that council has an ability to weigh in, and if you want to take public comment, I guess we'll be able to do that as well. But ideally, we want to make sure that that is a safer intersection. The schools are gonna try to get a crossing guard there, but it's a big intersection, it will require multiple people working that intersection, but if we can turn it into a four-way stop, we think it'd be the easiest and best way for us to do this until that signal work can begin in October. So just wanted to give you an update as to where we are, and to remind you that we're still working on it, and we're looking for additional ways that we can support making it safe for our kids to get to school this year.
Thank you, Sam. And that's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. And I'd just like to say that I've, I've really appreciated getting this report, being able to put, in this case, it's 10 pages, or nine pages of text anyway, of things that, sort of department by department, what, what the city government has been up to. We tend to report on things only when there's a crisis of some sort, and it's useful to know what is, what is happening on a, a month-by-month basis. A couple of things I wanted to kind of highlight. One is the, the deadline for filing to participate in the, our revamped tax relief program, the CHAP program. That's a deadline that runs through September 1st of 2022. You can file them online at charlottesville.gov/cor for Commissioner of Revenue, or in-person in the Commissioner of Revenue's office through September 1st. Also, for deadline of this coming Wednesday, to register for the Town Hall Community Workshop, this is part of the Community Greenhouse Gas Reduction Workshop. During this event, the City of Charlottesville encourages all community members to provide input on developing potential greenhouse gas reduction priorities. So you can register for that at 6:00 to 8:00 PM on August 17th. Register at a particular link. I suspect that this is probably available through the Public Works website as well. So rather than my reading off a, you know, 100-character Zoom link, go to the Public Works website if that's of interest to you. And the last thing I wanted to mention, it's not something that is referred to here in the report, but it's something that's also going on right now, and it calls under, it falls under the category of elections. Their, Virginia now permits localities to authorize ranked choice voting, or what's sometimes called instant runoff voting, for local elections and city council in particular. That is something that's been championed by Sally Hudson, and she's talking with a bunch of folks, including yours truly. I guess, Councilor McGill, are you also on that call on, on Wednesday? Do I remember?
Oh.
Somebody, anyway, there, there are a bunch of folks who are talking about this. If you are interested- are interested in the question of ranked choice voting or instant runoff voting, both at the nominations process and at the actual election process, we would have the ability to get it up and running before the 2023 council nomination and election. If you're interested, please contact me, contact Councilor McGill, contact the registrar, send us an email to council@charlottesville.gov, whatever, and, because that's, that's something that we're going to begin to talk about. My hope is that if, if the idea has traction, that it would come to this council probably by November or December, something like that. So, that's the only other thing I wanted to add. Any other comments in response to what Mr. Rogers had to say to us? Okay, so let's move on then to community matters. We have eight pre-registered speakers, and we have a few on our waiting list. If you are one of the first eight, if one of the first eight speakers is unavailable, a speaker on the waiting list who will move into that slot. Each speaker will have up to three minutes to speak, and once we get past the eight on the pre-registered list, we'll alternate in-person versus online. So, first of all, virtual attendees wishing to speak may select the raise hand option in the Zoom webinar to be placed in the speaker queue. If you have joined by phone and wish to speak during community matters, please press star nine. In-person attendees, just raise your hand to be recognized, and we'll alternate you with virtual speakers. There will be an additional public comments section at the end of the meeting. So, let's see. First, let's deal with the online speakers. Is our first online speaker available?
Yes, Mayor Snook David Koenig is first on the list.
Great. Mr. Koenig, you have three minutes.
Hello, are you able to hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, great. Good evening. My name is David Koenig. I'm a Charlottesville city resident and a Charlottesville city schools teacher. I also serve as the co-chair of the organizing committee for our teachers' union, and I'm speaking tonight in solidarity with the public employees of our city and in support of their effort to secure their right to collective bargaining. My main purpose in speaking tonight is to attempt to persuade the members of this council to enact a fair collective bargaining ordinance, but I would be remiss if I did not note that our city's teachers are currently engaged in the struggle to negotiate a fair collective bargaining resolution with our school board, and the precedent that this council sets will almost certainly have an impact on that effort as well. Collective bargaining is a fundamental right of all workers, established as such by Article 23, Section Four of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. It is the main legal tool that provides workers with a powerful voice in their workplace. When workers have this voice, they are able to work together to build a better workplace and a better city. Workers become part of a community within their workplace rather than isolated individuals. If you see collective bargaining in this way, as a fundamental right and a positive good, rather than as a privilege that you have the power to dispense or not, then you will see that efforts to limit or restrict it are antithetical to the spirit of worker empowerment. You will instead enact an ordinance that establishes the right to collective bargaining in full and empowers and includes your workers in building a more just and equitable workplace and city. To that end, I ask that this council amend the collective bargaining ordinance to allow bargaining on benefits and disciplinary procedures, which are essential components of workers' lives and their workplace culture. Amend the ordinance to include binding interest arbitration to resolve bargaining disputes, an essential piece of this fundamental right. Finally, amend the ordinance to extend collective bargaining to all city employees. This is a human right, not a teacher's, police, firefighters', transportation workers' rights. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Koenig.
Mary Carey is up next. Is she in the room by chance?
Ms. Carey? Ah, okay, good. With my glasses on, I can't see that far.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mary Carey, city resident. I haven't been here, like you can tell, for three years. It's good to be back. But about Midway Manor, you know it's a mess regardless of who bought it. We had a meeting Wednesday night, I'd like to thank Mr., oh, well, let's say, Councilman Payne and Councilman Pinkston for attending, and a few of the other entities throughout the city. So, right now, we're supposed to have a meeting tomorrow that's supposed to designate when this renovation is supposed to begin, or how it's supposed to work, I guess. I don't know. Anyway, I am here tonight to ask council, since y'all were so, you know, part of them getting that grant, is it possible you can let anybody that's in this brochure, pictures of anybody in this brochure, to actually come to Midway Manor and let us know what's going on? Because the current staff there, I'm not saying that the, the office manager, but the current staff, they're supposed to be a regional thing. It's not very professional. We have been sending emails since March, and we've been getting nasty responses from those people, especially one who had said in the email that she has no desire to talk too far or any of the residents in a meeting. We can have our meetings in our apartments. Hey, that wasn't professional. So I'm asking you if you could contact any of these people that came and stood in front of you and begged for that money, $23 million, to come and let us know what's gonna be done with it. And one more thing I would like to say to, for our city manager's position, I remember back in the day when Lake Monticello was a witness protection program for the mob out of New York and Maryland. We don't want to make Charlottesville a haven for white supremacists. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carey.
Our next speaker is Matthew Ray on Zoom. Matthew, you're on with council.
Hello, my name is Matthew Ray. I'm a nine-year operator at CAT, and I'm here to speak in favor of a strong collective bargaining agreement. I saw the earlier session when y'all were discussing the ordinance. Y'all touched on some issues like a neutral arbiter, which I really hope that you guys decide to go that route and, and give us someone that will be neutral in determining grievance process and allow us to have our, to negotiate health benefits, even though our health benefits right now are good. I mean, I have no problems with our health benefits right now, so I don't see that to be a big issue. I would also like to tell council that they have an opportunity here, as Council Wade touched on earlier, the effect that it could have on the surrounding counties. Charlottesville could be a leader for the entire region here to show that, give them a precedent that, look at what Charlottesville is doing, to give their employees a strong collective bargaining ordinance. I implore you to do this. We really, we are really in desperate need at CAT. As you've talked with the school bus issue, which is part of our transit, we have a lot of needs at CAT right now, and pay is one of them. Health benefits, not so much. That's, like I said, is pretty good. I would also like to talk about the right for all of our departments to unionize eventually. I understand you want to slow progress, a slow, a slow roll of this. I get that. But we're here in central Virginia. Everything to the west and to the immediate east of us, I mean, we're bigger than everybody else. I understand the budgetary concerns, but you're the second biggest employer in Charlottesville. Give us a strong collective bargaining agreement. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ray.
John Erdl is next on the list. Is he in the room at the moment?
Mr. Erdl? Ah, okay.
Hello, thank you. My name is John Erdl. I live in Charlottesville. I'm a representative of the ATU. I want to first applaud the city for finally moving forward on collective bargaining and making good on its commitment to its workers. We're very appreciative of that. However, we do believe, as you heard from our member Matthew Ray, that the ordinance would benefit greatly from a number of improvements, and we're happy to share those with you in the coming weeks and months. We, I just want to first off say, we sincerely hope that the city council will take seriously the feedback of its frontline workers. Collective bargaining in the public sector is fundamentally about collective problem solving and working together. It's therefore sensible that we take into consideration frontline workers' feedback as we craft the ordinance that will allow them to engage in collective bargaining. In its report today, representatives of Venable LLP acknowledged that it was guided by an underlying edict that it's better to pursue collective bargaining in moderation and not to do too much too quickly. I, however, don't think the city has anything to fear about collective bargaining that would warrant such kind of trepidation. Most states in this country, their public workers have union rights. Most have binding arbitration. Most can bargain over benefits. This may be new to Charlottesville, but it's certainly not new for, for so many areas of the country. And I just want to make a couple of brief points on the specifics of the legislation. We'll more thoroughly cover all of it later, but the unions aren't seeking to change the benefit plans. A lot of hay was made about that today. First off, no union can force the city to adopt a different benefits plan. As Matthew said, we don't want to do that. We like our benefits. We just want to hold on to what we have essentially. Nor are we interested in preventing the city from being able to discipline workers who aren't up to the task of carrying out their duties. In its form, however, in its current form, a number of essential parts of any union contract would be prohibited. I bargain contracts for a living, so I can speak to the kinds of things that we're seeking. In every contract negotiation, we seek to win due process rights for workers, for anyone who's being disciplined. Management retains the right to discipline, but they have to make sure that it's justified and that it's carried out fairly. This would be disallowed by the ordinance. As for protection against nondiscrimination, our standard contract language would be disallowed. We would seek transparency and promotional opportunities to make sure that it's equitable and that we would eliminate favoritism. That's not allowed. We would want to protect current benefits so that they can't be unilaterally reduced, so as to render a wage increase irrelevant. That's not allowed. I could go on, but I'll just say in general that the carve-outs are excessive relative to any practical need for the city to scale down the ordinance. And I'll be emailing to all of you a comparison of the different municipalities and what they've done, and, and as written, this one would be the weakest that has been adopted. All the others allow for the bargaining of benefits. Most of them have neutral arbitration for, for contract disputes. In closing, we welcome the opportunity to partner with the city on this important topic. I want to thank you for what you've done so far. A lot of work remains to be done, but thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Erdl.
Our next speaker is Jeff Fogel on Zoom. Jeff, you are on with council.
Thank you. Good evening. Our city is still mired in racialized policing. And though the city has done nothing except come up with a proposal to provide the very culprits of that racialized policing with additional leverage to deal with the city. I'm gonna keep repeating these numbers as long as they exist. Fifty-five percent of the people being arrested in Charlottesville are black. What's the explanation for it? None is forthcoming, and no one seems to care about it. Nobody on this council, nor anybody in the, in the city manager's office, seems to have lifted a finger to deal with the issue. We had a report several years ago that showed scientifically that black people in Charlottesville were subject to additional charges compared to their white comparable defendants and to more serious charges. Has that changed? Has anybody shown that it's changed? Listen, this is racism at its worst, and the worst part of it is, nobody seems to care about it. Not even say a word about it. Nobody on this city council has spoken up about this issue. Nobody in the city manager's office has. I don't care what color you are. This is racism exposed in the policing of our community, and it must stop. And to the extent that you all have power, either you or the city manager, who is after all the public safety director, to make some changes in that, you have to do so, because otherwise you are complicit in the very racism we're talking about. I just want to make one other point with respect to Mr. Groth. Don't treat us like we're stupid idiots. Somebody lied, and it was Mr. Groth. We were told that Mr. Groth was a freelance photographer who left the Capitol as soon as he was told to. That was not the truth. It was repeated by the mayor. Who lied? Let's assume Mr. Groth lied. Well, I just finished a case where I represented an employee who lied during an investigation, and it was the basis for a firing. Now, don't tell us that you can't fire an employee who lies to you during an investigation because it's not the truth. So start telling the truth, start admitting who's making lies, and start dealing with the issue of racist policing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fogel.
Our next speaker on the list is Nancy Carpenter in the room.
She's here. Ms. Carpenter?
Good evening. It's nice to be in front of some familiar faces and some not as familiar. My name is Nancy Carpenter, and I'm a resident here in Charlottesville. I wanted to share with you on the subject of homelessness, what the child of someone I follow on Twitter wanted his father to write. This is not a local person. It's someone else. And so he wanted to say the following. Some people think that people without homes are garbage, but they're still humans. Here's what they need: toothpaste, Band-Aids if they need them, new clothes, money, a lot of money, a job, friends, be friendly to them, give them food, a shower, shelter, like a really good house. Even if they could live in a haunted mansion, that would be better. A car, some help, medicine, and a doctor. The father asked, anything else you want to share with the people? Just be nice to them and treat them good. And, and that's what I'm asking the city to do and your counterparts in the county, because the problems I think that we will be seeing over the next few months are gonna transcend any type of geographical boundary that exists in this community. I was just reading a blog post regarding right to counsel in Richmond. A report came out, there's a hashtag that goes with this, Housing Justice Works, and it was a two, it was based on some 2019 figures in that in Richmond, they had served about 2,000 people with right to counsel, and the average income for those folks, under 13,000, about 12,005. And it resulted in many, many, many of those families and households staying housed. And I know that a couple of years ago, there was a lot of discussion about a right to counsel in Charlottesville. It's imperative that this city and this county work together, because so many people who need right to counsel have been pushed barely across the city lines into the suburban urban ring, into some of the properties that are low-income tax credit properties, which are facing their end of time with their tax credits, to which they may revert into fair market rentals, which we know people don't get a housing wage in this community. They barely get a living wage in order to afford their housing. So I'm, hopefully we'll carry this message to the county, but we need to have really deep right to counsel for people. We have seen the reports out of our local media, whether it be broadcast media or other independent media, about what people are facing here, and we really need to do more. Nonprofits are not going to be able to address the problem. Municipalities are gonna have to put some money up in that beyond the, our housing trust fund and beyond, you know, some of the tax relief thing. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter.
Our next speaker is Gregory Weaver on Zoom. Gregory, you are on with council.
Can y'all hear me?
Yes. Go ahead. Three minutes.
Hey, city council, this is Greg Weaver. It's Friday spring. Recently, I took a work trip to Vancouver, and I wanted to tell you a little bit about my experience using public transit there, because it was pretty fantastic. The good stuff started immediately. I got out of the airport and walked down to the train station that would take me downtown. I was frantically figuring out what kind of pass I needed to buy when the train came and left. But no worries, it ran about every six minutes. After a fun ride that allowed me to enjoy the views of the city, I got downtown, stepped out of the station, and to my delight, saw two-way bike lanes that were fully protected by a concrete divider, some bike share stations that were completely emptied out, and a ton of buses. During my stay, I rode the bus multiple times. Service ran probably every 10 to 15 minutes, and there were times where there were lines at stops. there were times where there were lines at stops. Riding the bus, catching the train, and biking around the city were all super accessible and very popular. However, I noticed that Friday rush hour traffic was still bad. That got me thinking about home. What I experienced was a testament to how we too can provide a robust mass transit service, as well as streets that are safe to bike on, and how all that would be doubtlessly extremely popular. But it was also a testament to how if we don't take specific action to transform our infrastructure away from being car-centric, we'll still run into the same old roadway congestion problems as we grow. As a result, our impact on climate change and public safety will be insufficient because of how many single-family vehicles will still be on the road. We need to pair a great mass transit system with a city structure that prioritizes the bus rider, bike rider, and pedestrian, and makes it difficult to get around in cars. We need to do this before we've grown too much and it becomes absurdly difficult to make these changes. This actually brings me to my next point. This weekend, I took the walking tour of Azay's exhibit on the downtown mall. Really glad to hear that a lot of you experienced that as well. We got to Fourth Street, and I couldn't help but think of how perverse it is that Heather Hareway is still a throughway for cars. I want you all to think about that really seriously. It's insane. If we can't permanently close that street, the site of extreme trauma to our community and our city, how are we possibly going to make that kind of transformational change to our infrastructure that is so critical to our climate needs? The only thing stopping us is your willpower to act and see it through. You say that you're serious about climate and transit and caring about the community's well-being. You have to prove it. Closing that street to traffic is the right thing to do for our community, thinking both in the now and in the future as we take control of our own climate destiny. Let it be the first domino to fall. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver.
Our next speaker is Tanisha Hudson. Tanisha, you are on with counsel.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
So Mayor Snook, I'm just wondering, do you suggest that we change from the capital of resistance to capital of resistant anti-racism? Should we provide the "Write Their Own" proclamation since we continue to show the world that we stand for racism and that we deeply believe in it? Can you also explain, Mayor Snook, because you're an attorney, or should I say attorney, Snook? How is it that you can ignore a chief, but you take the word of Groth? A chief is a director, basically, of her department. So you ignore her entire investigation, but you accept Groth's words. You accept his apology. You're okay with this man saying, hey, I was only there to take pictures, when we clearly have video footage of him going into the Capitol, storming in with everybody else with everything but a camera? As a body of government, I know that there's a policy for you to maintain information for up to five years. There's no way that this investigation file is missing, and Michael C. Rogers couldn't get his hands on certain information. There's no way. Now, I get the HR policy is missing some things, but there's no way that this man should have his job. We've clearly allowed people to be terminated for doing their job. No way. Now, I'm going to paint a picture for you all. Groth and Mooney knew exactly what they were doing. This is clear corruption, but I believe Groth and his Proud Boys have enough power, resources, and a unified group of individuals to rally behind him, beside him, and in front of him. That if you did terminate him, they would expose some of your hoods. Some of your hoods would come off, and your faces would be exposed at that point. I think that's the only thing I'm battling with really proving how corrupt this city is, is that some internal individuals are more deeply involved with this. And y'all know it. And that's why it was easier to knock off the people, the two people doing their jobs than it is to let this man go. And if you're afraid of the Proud Boys, just say that, because you've allowed them to look victorious, and you continue to allow them to look victorious. And as far as the union, I believe in a fire department union. I believe in a transportation union. I do not believe in a police union, because they're only going to target more black people. I do believe that you need to pay your employees a hell of a lot more money, and stop paying for comp studies, and take a look at the other three that you've already paid for. Just add more money on it, because things have went up with inflation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson. So that gets us through the first eight. Is there anybody else in the room here who would like to speak to counsel? Ms. Parker?
Good evening, Ms. Parker, again. This weekend, when I seen y'all in public, Snook, Pinkston, Payne, Miguel, and Rogers, I spoke to, and Mr. Pinkston, I spoke to you last week at Community Day, and you turned your head and turned your back on me. Mr. Wade spoke. I seen y'all at the reception for the pictures. Y'all chose to turn your back on me. Then you finally spoke, Mr. Snook. How do y'all, and Mr. Rogers, you just completely turned around with Snook, because y'all were talking. And I don't see how that's professional. If the community speak to you, speak back. But the disrespect, I will not tolerate. And I am back. I'm back in these chambers, and I'm back with a vengeance for my people, because it doesn't make no sense how y'all are now in charge, and y'all were in our communities, rallying to get y'all in these seats, and y'all are not doing your job. And Mr. Rogers, an interim city manager that don't give a damn about Charlottesville and the pain that we endure. White supremacy is still rising, and we need a police chief. And you need to listen to the community. And that online BS, uh-uh. You're leaving out a whole community. Ashley, what, y'all's deputy manager, supposed to be for equity and diversity, doing nothing for the people. Online, half of our people don't even have a way to even have a house, let alone a phone and online. You're leaving out the black community, elders. You're leaving out teenagers. You're leaving out public housing. We need paperwork. We need paper, not your consultants coming in here on computers. Anybody can hack that. Didn't they hack the federal court? White supremacy calling us niggers? So what, you think they're not going to get into the computer and put on there what they want? I would like to have a meeting with you on the police chief and the hiring of that, because now the PCOB, Snook, that y'all have changed up, that myself and Katrina Turner specifically put stipulations in those resolutions as we were victims of police brutality, I'm victims of police brutality, that's online. That's not in community engagement. We were on the ground, and that's what y'all need to be. And I'm back, and I mean that.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Let's see, we have online George Davis.
Mr. Davis here in person.
Oh, Mr. Davis here in person, okay.
City mayor, everybody here with respective places.
I moved to Charlottesville back in 2012. Worked a few places. Go driver came up. I applied. Got the job working with transit. I love my job. I love helping the community. I love helping my passengers. Several of your speakers already spoke on some of the topics that I was going to speak on. Benefits being one of them. Inflation has gone up. Benefits have gone up. Pay scale hasn't. We're getting ready to lose quite a few drivers, because pay scale has not gone up. Benefits, I'm not asking to have anything changed. The union, we just want the union to guarantee the right to be able to keep what we already have. I'm for the union. I don't think that the union will be here to fight against y'all, but to help y'all and transit. Me being a seven-year employee of transit, like I said, I love my job. I love to drive. I love helping the public. That's what I was born to do, and that's what I was raised to do. The Most High has built me to help others. Benefits are killing my paycheck. When I look at my paycheck, majority of it is in insurance and other benefits. We got to have a better pay scale. People coming in, they see what we're making, they turn their backs. That pay right there, they're not filling out the applications for it. We got six people right now training for transit. There should be more. There should be more. We have less drivers than we had when I first started. Trying to get people to come in now with the pay scale that we're starting off at, they're not filling out the applications. If they see that their benefits are not adding up to what they should be making, it defeats the purpose. I ask you, please allow us to have this union. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. How about Elizabeth Stark? Is she online?
Yes, Elizabeth, you are on with counsel.
Thank you, councilors. Thanks for having me here today. My name is Elizabeth Stark. I am a resident of the Woolen Mills in the city of Charlottesville. I'm here tonight to talk about two issues, collective bargaining and the school bus issue. So first, I want to say, I applaud you for looking at collective bargaining and being willing to embrace collective bargaining. Unfortunately, the proposed ordinance that you looked at today is too weak, and it needs to be strengthened. One of the major gaps is that the proposed ordinance doesn't allow city workers to bargain over discipline or disciplinary procedures, which is a right that should be granted to all non-police employees. As anyone who has worked under a mercurial manager knows, arbitrary and unclear disciplinary standards leave workers at the whims of their managers and open them up to harassment, retaliation, and discrimination. A clear set of standards and a fair process ensures the dignity of workers and prevents managerial abuse of authority, which none of us want. And I know, you know, I think in these situations, people tend to say things like, well, you know, I'm a great manager. I would never do that. Or, you know, we're a great council. We would never put our workers in this position. But, you know, collective bargaining is something that strengthens the role of workers for the long haul, and they need robust protections now and for the future. Just as discretion over pay opens up racial and gender-based pay gaps, discretion over discipline opens up racial and gender-based disparities over who gets punished for what and how severely. We know that people are often more sympathetic to those they see themselves in, and, you know, that leads to discrimination and disproportionate, you know, discipline. We all want a city where workers are respected and treated fairly, and managers don't abuse their power. And this is a way to make it happen. So while I appreciate the time you've put into collective bargaining, this issue and many others that so many people have brought up tonight are important, and we need to strengthen the ordinance. The next thing I want to talk about is the school buses. For the second year, I have a child at CHS and one at Walker. And for the second year in a row, neither of my children have been awarded seats on the city buses. Each pickup and drop-off takes about a half hour, so between my husband and I, you know, we could spend two hours a day making sure our kids get to and from school. Now, I know, of course, we'll try to do car pools and all those kinds of things, but the fact is that the logistics of that is very challenging for parents, and it's even more challenging for parents who might not have access to cars, and especially those who don't have time off work, who can't leave work to go get their kids to and from school. So I understand that the school bus driver shortage is not unique to the city, but I also know that a pay rate exists at which every one of those positions could be filled.
Thank you, Ms. Stark. Your time is up.
Okay, sorry, there was no timer. But I just, I urge you to try to solve this problem. For me and other city parents, it's extremely challenging.
Thank you. So continuing to alternate, is there anyone in the room here who would like to speak? Ms. Turner?
Katrina Turner. You all wanted to know what the people want for a new chief of police, but you have someone who literally attended the insurrection, took pictures with Alex Jones, bragged about securing Alex Jones, Infowars, the Proud Boys. He bragged about it. But I want to know how many of you were there on August the 12th, who were literally on the streets August the 12th, who seen people threaten your child, and the police did nothing, who seen those Proud Boys and the white supremists spit in people's face with the police standing right there, and nothing was done? The police stood down. How are we supposed to trust that you all are going to make the right decision in this next chief of police if our city manager accepts the apology of this man? Why would he accept the apology of someone who literally evidently hates us, who hates my people? Why is this man still working for this city? Did he apologize to us? Did he apologize to us? Do you know what we went through in 2017? I was pushed out the way of the car that day, understand? And you all are going to keep this man who attended the insurrection employed with this city? Really? Mr. Snook, you had a town hall about August 12th. Why weren't the people invited? Why don't you want to hear what we went through that night, that day, August the 11th, when that church was surrounded by those bongo tiki torches? Why don't you want to hear from us? When is there going to be a town hall for us? Because we are still hurting. There are people who still need their medical bills paid. They're still hurting in this city, but you all don't seem like you care. Hold a town hall again. Bring the national people like you did before, but don't do it when Ezzy is showing the pictures of us down on the downtown mall because of what we went through.
Thank you, Mr. Ern. How about Redath Murray?
I do not see them on Zoom.
Okay. Is Redath Murray here? Okay. Would you like to speak to us, sir?
Good evening.
Anybody in here?
Yeah, speak up a little bit, but yes.
Okay. Good evening.
Could you tell us your name, please, sir?
My name is Daniel Summers.
Okay.
With the Charlottesville Area Transit. I'm here to speak on the bargaining rights in the third party. I've been with the city for a little over 10 years. What's needed for us to be moved forward as a stronger transit system is the is the bargaining rights and also to maintain the proper structure for new drivers that we will have in the future. With the union, an arbitration is needed as well because we need someone to speak on the driver's behalf when issues occur. So with that being said, we do need a stronger place for the union to be put in place. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Summers. Is there anyone else online who would like to speak?
Peter Krebs has his hand up.
All right, Mr. Krebs.
Good evening, counsel. I just wanted to quickly thank you all and hope that you do go ahead and approve the funding and the ARP package that you're going to talk about for the second time later tonight, particularly the 500K for the Meadow Creek Trail, which will be part of a comprehensive connection really from the John Warner Parkway eventually all the way to Greenbrier, the 29 corridor at Greenbrier Drive, and then down to Mickey Drive in Hardywood. This is not a local recreational project. This is an important regional connection. And also as well, the money's in there for the safe routes to school. I would especially also like to thank the city staff and the schools for rapidly implementing the several safe crossings and walking routes to school. You know, these are not permanent solutions, but they're good ways to buy us time to get those permanent solutions. It's stuff we've been talking about for a really long time. I mean, it's interesting how sometimes it takes a galvanizing moment or a crisis to do stuff that we know we ought to do. So, you know, thank you for this. It's going to result in healthier kids, a cleaner environment, less driving, and a better community. Thank you so much for your work and I will mute and listen to the rest.
Thank you, Mr. Krebs. Is there anyone else in person who would like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Mary Karen, but everybody else had done, said what I was going to say. And I'm like you, I can't see. Y'all told good from way back there. Michael and...
Could you tell us your name, please?
Oh, Connie Rosenbaum, sorry. City resident. Thank y'all for being at Midway Manor and we're having that meeting tomorrow and I would like it if y'all could be there between 1:00 and 3:00, possibly, to meet with the new people that's supposed to be showing up tomorrow, to meet with us residents. And I'm going to tell you, this town used to be a very nice, clean town. It's not anymore. It's a nasty little town. There's potholes everywhere. There's a pothole at Page Street that's got water running out of it. Thursday, when I come out of Page Street off Hardy Drive, the hole was running out of water again. It's been going like this for three or four months now. Them holes shouldn't have been patched up. Dairy market, where they built that new apartment building. Those are dips in the road. They half hat, excuse my language, but they half-assed them when they patched them up. Now, when you're going down Preston Avenue to go to Emmett Street, they're working on that road. Well, there's dips in the road. There's no lights down that road. Even in the daylight, you can't see where the dips are in the road until you done hit the dips in the road and your car goes boom. Well, you can bust a tire or anything. They need to put a sign up the road that says bump to let us know there's a bump in the road. Because if I bust a tire, then I'm the one that's going to have to pay for it. There ain't going to be nobody's going to pay for it but me. So y'all need to do a little bit better about the town and get it cleaner. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rosenbaum. Is there anyone else online?
Yes, Mayor Snook. Bill Goldin is our 16th speaker. Bill, you're on with counsel.
Good evening, counsel. Sorry I couldn't be there in person. I didn't know I had to register in advance. You guys saw me earlier today. I want to speak about the unionizing. I drove school bus for the year because the city needed it and I drove a school bus in college and I loved it. So I came back to it to help the city. I ended up quitting because the rules kept changing, the description of my job kept changing, the description of our standards kept changing. And since we're a right-to-fire state, my only option was to accept the change or resign. So the end of the year, I resigned. That said, the question that's being asked is wrong. It isn't that there's a nationwide shortage of drivers, which is true. The question should be, why can't you keep drivers? There were 18 or so drivers the last day of school. I believe you have five left. Having talked to my coworkers at length about this, none of them quit over benefits or salary. They quit because of management. Without a union to protect your employees, you're not going to keep employees. I'm not sure what else to say about that. Mediation, not binding arbitration is not going to work because you end up having ultimate say and that is the antithesis of a union. There are many issues I would speak to you about privately. Publicly, we need a union. I did resign. I am not coming back. But I told the drivers I would continue to fight for them, even though there's only five left. We need representation from the union. I was a union driver in California for years. It was a classified employee union for the state. So this whole issue of the diverse needs, to me, is irrelevant. I was the shop steward my last year and we always had, I was always there when there was a disciplinary meeting in order to make sure, you know, employees were represented and protected instead of fairly uneducated employees being called in to the managers and being disciplined and told, sign this, and then given a week off without pay, instead of having someone there to protect their interests. Yes, you can fire employees because you have that right. And that's not going to change.
Excellent. Thank you. Your time is up.
I know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Okay, so that is our 16th and final speaker for Community Matters. There will be another opportunity for public comment at the end of the meeting and we will now move on to the action items portion of the agenda. First item up is the Preston Place Utility Easements. Ms. Robertson, are you presenting this to us?
Yes, I am. Right. So this agenda item is a request to allow some existing utility easements to be replaced by a new utility easement and for a boundary line between three privately-owned parcels and the city-owned right-of-way for Preston Place to be adjusted. Anytime that city-owned real estate, whether it's an easement or it is the amount of land within a public right-of-way, anytime you adjust or vacate city interests in real estate, that proposed action has to be brought to city council. As you will see in the plaques that are attached to this agenda item, most of the changes are proposed to happen along the frontage of three different privately-owned parcels along Preston Place. And so specifically, the two actions that are being requested of you after a public hearing is conducted are to enact an ordinance that will vacate existing utility easements and authorize the adjustment of the boundary line between these lots and the Preston Place right-of-way. And then separately, the adoption of a resolution that will formally accept the additional right-of-way that will be dedicated to the city as a result of the boundary line adjustment. This is fairly straightforward and all of this is to facilitate the proposed development or redevelopment of these three privately-owned lots. And so unless you have any questions, the staff recommendation is, again, after you conduct a public hearing, the staff recommendation is for you to take action to approve the ordinance and to approve the separate resolution accepting additional right-of-way. And the suggested motions appear on page 92 of 135 of your agenda packet.
Thank you, Ms. Robertson. Councilors have any clarifying questions?
Yes.
Yes.
Are we giving up land?
No.
No, we are moving an easement. So that requires us to vacate the location of an easement in one place and then the acceptance of the new easement in a different place that's shown on the plaques can be done administratively.
And this, the easement that we're giving up, we are not going to be foreseen to be needing in the future for sidewalks or other public interest?
No. And as you'll see on the plaques, the additional right-of-way that runs along the frontage of Preston Place, the additional right-of-way that we are receiving as a result of this transaction could potentially be used to facilitate that type of improvement.
So I'm just assuming that what's going on here is a lot of these are internal easements and, again, merging some land so that a larger parcel can be developed?
That's right.
Okay.
That's right.
I just wanted to make sure I'm not very great at reading land plaques. They're just, yes. So I just wanted to make sure I was correct in that.
That's right.
Ms. Robertson, this is not really terribly germane to the particular issue in front of us, but when I looked at this area on Google Maps, it indicates that the parcel, New Parcel A, basically, has numbers 502, 504, 506, 508, 510, and 512 designated for it. I'm just wondering, is there a plan in place to divide that into six separate parcels? Or what, how do we end up with six separate numbers there? Do you know?
I have not...
Is there history?
I have not looked at any proposed subdivision plaques that may be going along with the development of the lot. But usually, going from three parcel numbers to six would indicate that each of the lots is being reconfigured or re-divided into additional lots. So I haven't looked at those specific subdivision plans. I've only reviewed these particular plaques.
Yeah. I have no other questions. Anybody else have any questions? If not, let's go to the public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Mr. Dillhund, is there anyone who wishes to speak on this matter online?
Mayor Snook, I see no raised hands. Mayor Snook, I see no raised hands.
Okay. So we can then close the public hearing. It's now up to counsel. Thoughts, anyone?
I'm happy to make the motion per the staff recommendation.
Okay, we have two separate motions. We can take them in sequence.
Okay.
Anybody have any broader questions before we move straight on in? Okay, if no broader questions, fire away, Mr. Pinkston.
Okay, I move the ordinance vacating existing utility easements and altering the right-of-way of boundary line for Preston Place.
Okay. Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Ms. Thomas?
Counselor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes five-nothing. And then second motion?
Yes, I move the resolution accepting the dedication and conveyance of an additional 1,227 square feet of public street right-of-way to be added to Preston Place.
Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Thomas?
Counselor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
Okay, that motion also passes five-nothing. Thank you, Ms. Robertson.
Thank you.
Next item up is the Belmont Bridge Replacement Project appropriation of roughly $2.7 million. Jeanette, you with us? Yeah, okay, I see you there, okay? Fire away. Present to us, please.
Wonderful. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to give you an update on Belmont Bridge. We executed a contract with Kaden Construction on June 16th. We started, or they started, mobilizing in July. We have, to date, processed about 90% of the submittals. We've approved every subcontract. So a lot of paperwork's been completed to date. We've done a majority of the public utility relocation. We have a little sanitary and a little water left on Old Avon. We have started the storm water work, completed it on East South Street. We've started on Ninth and Avon between Levy and Graves. We've done about 50% of the natural gas relocation. We've also completed a majority of Phase 1 of the private utility relocation. We just have Comcast left to do. We've completed the traffic shift, moving all traffic, including pedestrians, from the east to the west. That's allowed us to remove the eastern bridge. That's been completely demoed. You now see two piers. We have completed the southern abutment for the eastern bridge. We have beams or girders, whichever you want to call them, over Old Avon and over the railroad. The contractor is focusing heavily on completing the northern abutment so that we can complete and erect the beams and girders over Water Street. In the next few weeks, you will see, one day, we'll be flagging Water Street traffic as those girders are erected. And we can continue with the deckwork as well. We have built the footers, as well as the stem walls, for the extension of the Northern Head Underpass and that is between the LexisNexis building, as we call it on Water Street, to the pavilion. That is going to be our next big pedestrian impact. We'll be closing that so we can form in place the overhang, the concrete structure. That's going to be closed for a couple of weeks. We're going to have signs up, as well as audible devices directing people to walk along the southern edge of Water Street and then to connect to the downtown mall, either by the staircase or the ramp that's to the west of the transit station. So you're going to see that. You're also going to see the southern pedestrian underpass. We've excavated for it. You'll see four new precast concrete structures installed in the next few weeks as well. There's going to be a lot of construction on Water Street when we are building the Northern Head Extension. You're also going to see some large detention, underground detention basins that are constructed. If you looked at the project site, you'll see a lot of large concrete pipes. That's where that's going. We're also going to be focusing on rebuilding East South Street and that way we can close Old Avon between... and that way, we can close Old Avon between Garrett and East South Street. So again, it could be storage, and then eventually, we're going to do some relocation of utilities, doing some grading, and making our pedestrian plaza. So that's currently where we're at. So back when VDOT granted us an additional $4,280,739 that we got appropriation from you all on June 7th. VDOT had also requested additional demonstration funds for the Belmont Bridge. And we just received word that we've been granted $2,697,398 of federal funding that we're asking you all to do the first reading for this appropriation tonight. Given where we're at, we have about half of a new bridge constructed. We still have to demolish the western half, and we have to build two bridges. Not only the western bridge, but there is the knuckle portion that swoops off the western bridge and goes down to the pavilion. That's considered another bridge. So we still have a lot of high-risk, high-dollar items left. We have progressed in our construction. We're on the critical path. All of these bridges are on the critical path. We're also seeing that we've had to do some substitutions, nothing that the public would be aware of EPS material. We're having reinforced concrete pipe. There was a delay in that. Luckily, we've been able to make up time by focusing our efforts on work that needed to be done so we could wait until the schedule progressed and the reinforced concrete pipe was available that we could continue with that. We're seeing some inflation, et cetera. So we still have a lot of risk on this project. So the most conservative action, we believe, is the Virginia Department of Transportation provided us this additional funding. This will be included in our contingency funds until the end of the project. Contingency funds are to ensure that we're meeting the goals and needs and purpose and vision that the public expects, that you all expect of this project. It's not our intention to increase the scope or make it even more fantastic of a project. This is just to ensure that we can meet within our budget constraints and hopefully with our time as well. So with that, do you have any questions?
Councillors have questions?
Yeah, as a project manager, I would say whenever you can get more contingency money, get it. So absolutely. Yeah, just a quick question. First of all, thank you for this excellent update on the project. I really appreciate it. That was very well done. Any extra funds that are brought into the project that aren't expended at the end? What happens to those monies?
They get returned to you. So the Virginia Department of Transportation does allow us to expend the funding in certain buckets, and the buckets that have the federal and the state dollars, those are expended first. We do have local funds that are not matched with any federal and state dollars, and those are the last funds that we expend.
I see, I see. Okay, thank you.
Other questions? I'm just curious. So I take it from this characterization essentially as additional contingency funds that although it's still early in the process, we are not yet thinking, oh dear, we're not going to have enough money to do this?
Correct, correct. Everything's going to plan, I would say. We currently have fully executed two change orders. We are looking to the future. We're trying to keep the contractor moving, making sure that we are progressing this project as fast as possible. Definitely want to meet the schedule. If we can exceed it, that would be probably amazing at this point, but anyway. So we've had additional, like, flagging expenses that we weren't expecting, trying to ensure that, again, we're moving this work as fast as we possibly can.
And what's the expected completion date?
The final completion date that has not changed from the original contract is still January 25th, 2024.
Anybody have other questions?
No.
So this is just as a matter of first reading. Counsel, do we have agreement to move this item to the September 6th meeting for a second reading?
Can't do it soon enough.
Oh, that's right, that's right. Public hearing, forgot about that. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak to us on this matter, Mr. Dillhund?
Mayor Snook, I see no raised hands.
Okay. Thank you for catching that, so we comply with legalities. Do we have agreement to move it to the second reading, to the September 6th meeting for a second reading?
Yes.
Can it go on the consent agenda? What is the rule for that?
If folks want to have a go on consent agenda, any reason not to? I didn't hear any discussion of any issues, so.
Yeah.
Okay, let's put it on the consent agenda then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, honorary street designation request. Mr. Sanders? Is Sam back in charge of this? Yeah, there we go.
I am, I am here.
Okay.
All right, so Brennan Duncan, our traffic engineer, is on vacation, so I'm presenting these two items for him. We do have two honorary street designations, one for Langford Avenue between South First Street and Ridge Street to be honorarily named Dr. Alvin Edwards Drive to honor over forty years as the pastor of the Mount Zion First African Baptist Church and service to the city of Charlottesville. This item was submitted by the Edwards family. Also, Ridge McIntyre Road between West Main Street and Preston Avenue to be re-honorarily named Vinegar Hill Boulevard to honor the rich history of the Vinegar Hill neighborhood lost to urban renewal. And this item was submitted by Ms. Mary Carey. In addition to these items, just wanted to highlight for council that I recognize before me, there's been a lot of conversation about honorary street designations. We still intend to bring forward a policy. We did not push forward to bring that policy immediately with so many other priorities at this time. But because we had a couple of inquiries specifically about these two items, we wanted to go ahead and bring those forward since the last conversation was that we would attempt to address them annually. So we wanted to bring these before you and remind you that we will bring back a policy using the Historic Resources Committee recommendations, as well as layering in some operational concerns so that we can manage this policy going forward.
So last time we had major discussion of this, I think was almost exactly two years ago, if I remember correctly. And I remember there having been discussion of us having a policy, but I don't remember where we left it with that policy. I know in at least one respect, we didn't follow the policy back in 2020. Is there a policy that, Mr. Sanders, either in your archaeological digs that you've been doing so much of recently? Or I asked the question to Ms. Robertson, and she wasn't sure there was a policy that was still really our policy. I'm curious whether we have a policy right now.
I'll say we have procedures that we have internally been following, which is to evaluate the items, consider them on the merit of the application, bring those forward, and then following the two-year period of presentation of them upon council's approval. But we definitely feel the need that we should explore further an actual policy that council can outline parameters so that we can make the public aware as well.
So if there is not presently a policy, there is effectively no constraint on us.
I think, I mean, there is, that was passed in, like, 2018.
Something like, 2017, 2018, something like that.
But it's very loose, and the historic resources, there's too many HR committees.
Historic Resources Committee.
Did send us some recommendations a while, I want to say a little over a year ago. But we've had a lot of upheaval and turnover, and this is just one of the things that I think got kind of lost in all of that.
Well, I remember two years ago specifically saying that I thought all of these requests ought to be run through the Historic Resources Committee and not come to council straight off. Do other folks have that recollection? I guess, Michael or Sina?
We talked about that. I don't know if the Historic Resources Committee felt fully comfortable with that. So I think that's where things kind of got left at that point.
The only thing.
If I could add, in reading the information that was provided, there was no strong recommendation. There was just reflection. So that is the reason why we interpreted that a policy was probably necessary at some point. But we're at this moment following the practice that we have observed prior to this time. And this was just the timing that fit within our being able to bring items before you.
Well, I remember that one of the things, one of the proposals we voted on back in 2020 was designating a portion of the street as, I think, Black Lives Matter Way or Boulevard, or I don't remember what road we called it. And I remember voting against it because it didn't follow the policy. It didn't fall within the policy. Not for lack of sympathy with the cause, but simply that I thought we had a policy that it was not followed in that.
Because it was a, part of the policy there was about, it could be named after a person, it could be named after an organization. And there was another thing that was kind of, that that could fit under. That's where Black History Pathway was also having issues because it was more about, it was naming something after an ideology, not a more concrete thing. So there was some issues. I remember, I've got stuff about it, but I'd have to go look it up.
Yeah, I tried to find it. After I was reading this over the weekend, I tried to go find my old notes on it, and it was coming up dry. Ah ha. Ms. Robertson?
It should be in your email, but she can speak on it.
Yes, so Mayor Snook, you inquired about an existing policy earlier this evening. And so I have been searching through various emails while you guys conducted the first part of tonight's meeting. And there is an honorary street name, it's called a policy, was adopted by council in 2011. And it is not very detailed. It's more of a process. But the only criteria set forth in that document is as follows. It says honorary street name designations should be limited to individuals or to events that have made an important and lasting contribution to the city of Charlottesville or that represent a key part of its history. The street to be designated should have a connection to the individual or the event and his or its contribution. And it says this designation should not be used for an individual or event already recognized in some significant manner. Those are the only criteria in the 2011 policy. Otherwise, the rest of the document is about the process. There's an application, and as you see in your materials for these items, applications have been filled out. The city council is responsible for reviewing those applications, and staff is supposed to indicate whether or not there are any cost implications of the request. And if you aren't familiar with individuals or events, to give you background on the nominations, and then you receive a resolution and you vote on it. And so those are the only criteria that exist right now. All of those are from 2011. City council, it hasn't really been clear what different policy or procedure city council is interested in. And as noted, a couple of years ago, this matter was referred to the Historic Resources Advisory Committee. And they did come back with a report a year and a half ago, something like that. But it really was more of a report and some analysis, but it did not propose a specific policy. And the city council that received that report did not really identify what policy components that would be different from the 2011 policy that it wished to see included. So I think there's been a lot of sort of roundabout discussions of it, but it's been, it has not come to the top of the priority list from a staff perspective, probably because there's not a lot of clear guidance as to what council would like, other than what's in the older policy.
And this was also, someone just reminded me, we rejected Henry Martin Way because there hadn't been any community input from the community. It was somebody who was not living in that area who suggested that. However, nobody who actually lived in Tenth and Page had been involved in the application process. So this is, this is one of those areas where, again, anybody can ask any street to be renamed anything, but we don't have a procedure to interact with the neighborhood association or to check with anybody who lives in that area as to whether or not they're okay with that. So.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
It's been my experience that when you're talking about permanent street name particularly, there are impacts, particularly if they're businesses, you know, on the block. And they look for sake because, you know, that means they've got to change their stationery and all that. That has a real cost to businesses. So I think that if we're talking about a process for permanent street names, then we best come back to you with having studied it more thoroughly, picking up on the conversation tonight, and come back with a suggested direction so that it's clear, it's understood, and things like community engagement or affected parties, you know, have an opportunity to give their input.
Well, of course, these are honorary street names, and nobody's going to change their stationery over.
Not for the honoraries, right.
So that was one of my questions. The underlying or original or current street name is still the official street name of the post office. This is just a.
Right.
So with Heather higher way, is that an official change or an honorary?
Honorary.
Honorary. And as a practical matter, it means that the city bears the cost of some signs.
And then, I guess, is there usually a time limit placed on these? Or is it?
Well, you know, that's one of the things we talked about, at least touched on briefly, is whether one of these designations was going to be permanent, in perpetuity? Is it going to be something that's good for a period of ten years? And then we name it after somebody else who comes along. That's one of the things that we were sort of hoping would be discussed in coming up with some kind of policy on it.
One of the other topics that came up was how many honorary street names would intersect.
Right.
Some of the signs would have been stacking multiple street signs, and that became an issue because of where people wanted the street names to be.
At the corner of, I guess it was going to be second or third, and I guess it was going to be second and Market Street, we were going to have three honorary street names, depending on which direction you were going in, on which roads.
I would just, I proposed to just keep it simple and follow the procedure the last one's used for, where we have the Historic Resources Committee provide us a recommendation and then vote on it after that, taking that under advisement. But that's what we did last time. That seemed simple enough, and I thought worked.
Does that sound reasonable to folks?
Yeah.
In the meantime, we can talk about whether we need to have a more formal policy figured out and what the parameters ought to be. But in any event, to. But in any event, to refer both of these matters to the Historic Resources Committee.
That's fine with me.
Sound reasonable, Mr. City Manager?
Sure.
I do think we need to work in there someplace that the neighborhoods need to know about There has to be some sort of... Because, I mean, again, this was brought to my, reminded my attention about the Henry The streets in the neighborhoods should have meaning to the people who are living in the neighborhood.
Right.
And it shouldn't be somebody outside the neighborhood who doesn't really, might not have a whole lot of connection to who's living in that neighborhood to determine who should be honored in the neighborhood. So it's one thing if it's downtown. Here in our business community, in our more public areas, but especially in some of our more residential areas, we should be encouraging more collaboration.
Well, I have to say, if that's one of the criteria, Vinegar Hill Boulevard is going to have a problem because there are no residents of that stretch of road. But anyway, I-
No, I mean, that's the same thing with like saying something on Main Street there. We should have a policy for ones that are in the more public eye, that are getting a lot of traffic, and one for our neighborhoods.
Well, in any event, let's go ahead and refer it to the Historic Resources Commission Committee with the hope that they will also address the neighborhood views of things and community impact and public engagement.
I also just sent out a bunch, a couple of emails from back when we were working on this more.
Yeah, I saw that. Thank you. Okay, sound like a plan.
Do we have any sense at all of how long that will take? Is this a two-month process?
I know all the things on yours plates to deal with, this is not at the top, but it would be-
I'm not aware of their schedule. I can't speak to how quickly we can get that item on, but I can notify staff tomorrow to take it forward.
Great.
Thank you so much.
You didn't have to.
Thanks. Okay, next item on the agenda, an ordinance to amend city code section 36.
Do we need to take a vote on that?
Yes.
Do we need to take a vote to actually refer it?
To defer it.
No.
There's no requirement that we do so, but if we want to, we can certainly.
The-
It's not like a planning item.
The Alvin Edwards one, so we're deferring both of them, is that it?
Is that what folks want to do?
You referred, well, I'm trying, the Alvin Edwards one was done for a specific purpose in celebration of his 40th anniversary that's coming up soon. And they were hoping to be able to unveil that as a part of that anniversary.
Well, how do folks feel about that?
I'm in favor of that one. I think that, you know, maybe we put a one-year time limit or something on it.
I'm in favor of both of them. So what we could do is we could put both of them forward, but say no new ones until we get this policy worked out.
That works for me. Does that work for you, Councilor Payne?
Sure.
Okay. I'm not going to find a hill to die on there.
Okay, so we'll stick with the items then. Let's take up, first of all, the Dr. Alvin Edwards Drive proposal. Is there a motion?
I move for approval of the honorary street to be named after Reverend Dr. Alvin Edwards.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? Ms. Thomas?
Councilor McGill?
Yes.
Councilor Payne?
Yes.
Councilor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
Okay, that passes five-nothing. And then there's Vinegar Hill Boulevard. Is there a motion on that?
I move for approval of the Vinegar Hill honorary street name.
Second.
Any discussion of that one? Ms. Thomas?
Councilor McGill?
This is for the Vinegar Hill?
Yeah.
Yes.
Councilor Payne?
No, it's not that. I think it would be good to have it reviewed by the Historic Resources Committee, but I'm not going to die on that hill, but because of that reason, no.
Councilor Pinkston?
I'm voting yes for that.
Mayor Snook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
Okay, so that passes four to one. Okay, now we'll move on to the amendment to code section 30-6. Mr. Vandiver? Mr. Divers, you got both of you, huh? The dream team.
Lucky y'all.
Evening, Mayor and City Council. Before you on this agenda item is a request related to tax refunds that result from either incorrect or erroneous assessments. Typically, these assessment changes occur in instances where it might be discovered that an item is not actually taxable in the city, or material change has occurred in the underlying assumptions that were used to make an assessment. Current city code requires approval from city council. If such a refund exceeds $2,500, which is a pretty low threshold, and you may have noticed over the past few months and over the past year that there have been quite a few of these on your agendas. So we're asking you to approve raising that minimum threshold from $2,500 to $10,000, which is allowable under state code. The existing threshold of $2,500 has been in place in state code since 1995, so that's quite a long while. So we're just hoping to be able to update city code to match some recent changes that were allowable by the General Assembly. So a refund of up to $10,000 would still require several steps of approval from the Assessing Office, from the Treasurer, and the Finance Department, so still several levels of approval that would be required. So we're hoping that this will help free up your council agendas and allow staff to handle these refunds administratively in the same manner that we do for refunds under the $2,500 threshold currently. So you can see this proposed change has been reviewed by the Treasurer's Office, by the Commissioner of Revenue, and the City Attorney's Office. So that concludes my short summary. I'm happy to answer any questions. Commissioner Divers is here as well if you have any questions. And we hope that at the second reading next month that you will be able to approve this change for us. Thank you.
Councilors, any questions?
No, I hope we can put it on the consent agenda for next week, for next meeting.
I just, I'm curious, how many times is this happening because there is confusion about whether a business is located in the city or in the county? Does that happen often?
More than we would like it to, yes. Particularly with contractors, you know, who are, whose administrative offices are typically, you know, filing for the licenses. And then they find out later, usually after Albemarle County audits them, that they were in Albemarle County, and then they reach out to us, you know, to correct it on our end. But yeah, it happens.
Okay. And then I know there have been at least one, there was one issue recently growing out of the recent Virginia Supreme Court decision. Are there other things like that that are coming forward? Or is that just a one-off?
Not typically, I mean, there may be. We've had instances where businesses, a business has gone out of business, or has changed names, for instance, or changed ownership is a better example. A business changes ownership, keeps a lot of the same staff, the staff just out of habit files for a business license under the old entity. You know, and we don't know that they've gone out of business, and so we go ahead and issue the license, and then they come back and say, oops, we should have done this under, you know, another, under the new entity. And so we can't, you know, we can't just refund the new, you know, the new entity. So there has to be a refund.
Okay. Well, I certainly think anything that makes it streamlineable is a good thing, so I'm fine with it. How do folks, anybody else have any comments? Should we put it on the consent agenda for the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you all. Next.
Thank you all.
Vacation of unacceptable right-of-way for Oak Street at 321 Sixth Street. This is a second reading that was deferred from July 18th until our friend, Mr. Wade, could return. Any additional presentation we need from staff? Or Vice Mayor Wade, were you able to review the presentation from July 18th?
Yes, I'm familiar with-
So are we?
I could use a memory jog here. So this was the one that Councilor McGill had concern about in terms of, this is a paper street, I guess. And then your concern was about, basically, are we doing these fairly?
Yes.
And then former Councilwoman Galvin emailed us about paper streets in general, I guess. Did all of y'all see that?
Yeah.
Yes.
And then I think the idea that she was making, which makes sense, is that with the new comp plan and all the things that we're wanting to do, with the new zoning and so forth, we might be better served to hold on to our paper streets if we want our paper alleys for, given some of the priorities of the comp plan, which are to minimize curb cuts, to minimize impact to the front of properties, and if we had alleyways behind places that would, you know, that would be better for cars and so forth. So it seemed like a pretty, you know, conceptually, it all, it seems fairly straightforward, but the practicality, I think, would be very complicated. So I don't know that we can come up with like a general statement or not.
Well, I think part of what former Councilor Galvin was talking about is there are a number of places, and this, I think, is also what your experience was, where there's an alley that runs behind, sort of between the two streets. And it can, it may well have been intended at one point to be the alley through which people would access, you know, 100 years ago, they would have a garage back there, or a horse barn, or a stable, or any number of things like that, and they would have access along that road. There are a number of places in Belmont in particular where there are places, you know, there are situations like that, where people have been relying on that paper street, if you will, that undeveloped, in some cases that somebody threw a little gravel down, but that's about it, street. That presents a very different problem from what I think this situation presents. To me, this situation, it's a little bit misleading to put it into the same category as the overall paper street discussion because it's, and if you've been to the scene, you know that basically what we're talking about is what both of two adjoining properties are using as their driveway right now.
Yeah, that's the way it was at my house.
Yeah, okay. And so the issue, where it doesn't lead to anything, it's, there's already a curb cut there. We're not solving any other problem by having it, by holding on to that. And if we divide it up and give each side another batch of property, we at least get to assess that larger lot for more tax dollars every year. And because there is also, you know, there are utilities back there that we have no, we're not doing anything with, we're not controlling them, they're not city utilities, they're private utilities. I see no benefit to the city to retaining it. Admittedly, not a lot, you know, the $300 or so of additional tax revenue a year, it's not nothing, but it's not a huge amount. It's not a game changer either way. But at least it's something, and it's property that we're not presently maintaining. And maybe we ought to be maintaining if it's going to be ours, so.
And my issue is, this has changed, every time you turn around, this has changed.
Yep.
And I don't want to approve any of these until there is a very clear way, and then also that we let the community know. Because, like I said, at one point in time, you got it for free. Another point in time, you had to buy it. Another point in time, it's just if someone had a structure sitting on it for 20 years, they got it. So if you know what to do, if you know to go to council, if you know to go to NDS about this, you might be able to get some free property. And that's what, that's these core policies where I want to make sure we're being equitable throughout the city. That no matter where you live in the city, if you have property, you know, you can look it up easily and find out if you want to close these easements and you want to have the opportunity to own this land that you have been maintaining for decades, it's a very clear policy on how to go about it.
And I agree, but for this particular situation, or these homeowners, property owners now, do we need to-
But we haven't decided if we're going to make people pay for it, or if we're going to give it away. And I think that needs to be decided before we approve any of these. Because again, at one point in time, we made people pay for it. One point in time, we gave it away, and then we wouldn't do anything with it.
Okay.
I think it's worth noting that this is an unacceptable right-of-way. It is not something we've got a road on. We have no investment in it. We've never done anything with it. I mean, I completely agree that it would be useful to have a policy, and I understand that we have gone back and forth as to what that policy should be. And at least, I agree, at one point, we were insisting that people pay for it. It's hard for me to understand, in this kind of a situation, why that makes sense, that they should pay for it in this particular case. But there have, certainly there have been times when, in fact, I had a client who was very upset that she was being told that she had to pay for the, you know, the back 10 feet of her lot that she thought she had always owned. I'm inclined to support it, as I said before, but I also would appreciate having some more detailed thought about what the rest of these kinds of proposals ought to be and what the parameters are. Does it in fact matter that it's unacceptable versus it's something that we've developed? I don't know. It seems to me it ought to make a difference. I can't tell you specifically why.
Could I ask if, could I ask whether there's a particular urgency for this particular property, or these particular property owners right now, is this like holding up some major transaction for them? Or can we have, I don't know, a month or so to like try to craft a policy around this? I don't know if Ms. Robertson knows the answer to those things or not.
So I don't think there, for this particular application, I'm not aware of any pending real estate closing or anything like that. So I don't think there is a rush to decide this particular matter. I will also note, it's not that that city council doesn't have policies, it's more that perhaps city council, over the years, different city councils have had different priorities and different perspectives. And so the policies that are in place today were adopted, oh gosh. We have these lights that turn off after a period of inactivity, so, sorry about that.
Need to move around a little bit.
I know, I know. So anyway, there are existing policies. We, you know, possibly should attach them to the agenda materials when we send you these, so you can see what they are. But it does make a difference as a practical matter whether the streets have been improved and accepted into the city system. In that case, that's clearly the city selling, you know, property that is, has been acquired and used for a public purpose. In other situations, particularly for some of the older areas, the city may not- In other situations, particularly for some of the older areas, the city may not actually own title to the underlying land, but the city does have a right to use it if and when the city decides it would like to sort of claim it for improvements to be located. So there are multiple variations of what the circumstances of an individual application can involve. But if you would like to postpone this longer to have more information about what the existing policies are, we can, we can certainly repackage this and bring it back to you at a later date.
So it's council's preference?
I think in deference to Councilor McGill's concerns, I would, I would support that. I don't want to spend an incredible amount of effort of staff's time on this topic, but I do think Councilor McGill makes a good point that we should try to be consistent.
I just know from a homeowner's perspective, because as I said, the street, the easements on both sides, on the front, on the side and the back of my house, it has been incredibly confusing over the years. I actually did, I've looked into this at various points. And then I stopped, because I just got so frustrated. And so I just... I just, I think this is one of those areas that we just, it's, we need to iron it out. Clearly, not from a governmental perspective as much, but as a constituent perspective. It's, and then it's just fair, that's...
What do you think, Vice Mayor Wade, what's your opinion?
So, you know, my 20 years doing planning for the county transportation plan, and I did, you know, countless number of these, and I just looked at them on a case-by-case basis. If many of these type of right-of-ways were going to like an old family cemetery, but it seemed like it was in the middle of a field, and for cases like that, we wanted to reserve that right-of-way. Other times, it was an old road that it just wasn't used anymore. And so, you know, I recommended for approval. And, and the homeowners and things, you know, until something came up, they used it and just like it was there. So I understand your concern, I'm prepared to support it. But, you know, I would not be opposed to, you know, waiting to, we get some additional information. But I don't want to get into having staff to go back and study and research and prepare reports and things for every project, so, I mean, every item, so. But if, this is not a project that, you know, that I'm going to, you know, lay down and fall on a sword over, type of thing, so.
All kinds of interesting metaphors being used.
Yes, just throwing them all out there, so.
Mike, what about you? I'm fine to support Councilor McGill's approach, I see the point. Laurie, I guess it sounds like as council, we either just need to make a decision. Are we following a process? Is that process going to be the point system we already have in place? Or do we want to develop a new one, or do purely want to do it on an ad hoc basis? At least, that's how I'm thinking of it. But if Council McGill, the concerns they raised, if we want to hold off on voting for it until we've come to a decision on council towards that approach, I'm fine to do so. And I do think it will, you know, come up a lot, given the number of paper streets we have. And we have no clear way how we're going to do it beyond just a case-by-case basis, but...
Okay, so we've got three votes for trying to figure out a policy before we move forward with this.
Yeah, is this something that would be part of Mr. Freeze's remit in terms of figuring out how this might factor into the upcoming zoning work? To Kathy Galvin's point about this paper streets, I mean, or is that a different topic than what, specifically, that we're chatting about tonight?
So there's, there's two, there's layers of policies and procedures that we have currently. Several years ago, led by former Councilor Galvin, there was a committee formed that was specifically charged with looking at alleys only as being potential opportunities in the future for places to put bicycle and pedestrian facilities, or to look for other sort of access opportunities. But keeping in mind that most alleys in the city were created, as Mayor Snook noted, really to be, for private rights of access, usually along the rear of lots. They were never intended specifically, most of them, to be public property. And so while you do have control over whether or not they are erased from the land records, you may or may not be able to make people pay to close them, because you don't really own them. And if you wanted to use them, you would probably need to compensate the people who do own them. So alleys are a little bit different than streets, which, so there are just shades of difference between different areas. But you do have two different distinct policies. One is for alleys, which has sort of a numerical scoring rubric. And if a certain number of points indicate value for future public use, then an application isn't allowed to even move forward to City Council. But if it's not an alley, and it's, it's, it's a paper street, or it's a city like Brandon Avenue that had been accepted and improved by the city, those are two, those are governed by a different policy that was approved by council most recently, I think in 2019. So I think we, what we need to do is package those two policies up and provide you with some information about them, so that you can have that information in front of you when these come forward as individual proposals.
So are we still in the position of three of us thinking we should defer until we figure out something more comprehensive?
Looks like that.
So I guess the question is, do we have sufficient direction to Ms. Robertson to help us figure out what that next step ought to look like?
I think probably the ball should be in my court to send all of you copies of the current existing policies. And then, then we can go from there. And you can, as a group, indicate which of those policies you might like to change or add to.
Sounds reasonable to me.
Thank you.
Ms. Robertson, what are you thinking in terms of time?
I can, I can get the existing policies out to you with a memo, you know, tomorrow, Wednesday at the latest, that those are easy to pull together.
Would you want to maybe suggest we bring this back up again at the second meeting in September?
Second or first? Sorry.
Second?
The 19th?
19th?
Or the 6th?
19th or the 6th?
Let's say the 19th.
19th.
Okay. All right.
I won't be here on the 19th.
You won't be.
Well, then the 6th.
I will be having stitches taken out of my leg.
Well, hopefully you'll let us know your thoughts for our two.
Well, I mean, clearly, this is an issue that's important to you, and you, it has animated you more than it has animated the rest of us. So we should do it on a date when you can be present.
Well, is the 6th too early?
If the 6th, I mean, it sounds like we've got a lot on the agenda for the 6th. I mean, and again, this is not a pressing matter. So I would think that the first...
So let's go to the first meeting in October, which would be the, what, the 3rd? Is that?
Yes.
October 3rd? Okay. Let's go to October 3rd with it. Thank you. So, next item on our agenda is 1000 Monticello Road special use permit. We considered back in June, probably in July, July 18th. Is there any additional presentation from staff? I see Mr. Fluska here.
I have no additional presentation, as long as Council Wade is comfortable with the notes from the previous meeting.
You good to go?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so is there any discussion or a motion on this special use permit?
Is this the 1000 Monticello?
Yes.
I mean, again, I don't see much difference in the proposal that was denied last year.
Somebody want to make a motion?
So, do you want to?
Well, I mean, you know, what I would like, and I don't know if this should come under, want to get, so if it gets second, under discussion, Mr., some of my...
You have discussion before you make a motion, or you have discussion after you make a motion?
Yeah, so what I would like, it's my understanding that for this project, that the owner or the applicant is not receiving any of the affordable housing funds or anything like this, as this is all done using their resources. And I had concerns about the tenure of the affordability of it, of 10 years. And I certainly would like to have that expanded. And if it can't be expanded, then I would like to use some of the affordable housing funds during that interim time for the city to work with the applicant to make the units affordable as long as we possibly can. I don't know if that's done, if it's possible, if it's legal, but that's what I would like to know. Does it, does my question or theory make sense?
I'll respond to that by simply saying, with regards to the affordable housing funds, that would only be available through the rounds that we make available throughout the year. The applicant would have to apply at that time to be considered in that competitive round. So I would imagine that that would interfere with the schedule that they plan to be following. And while I appreciate the desire to expand the affordability, it does really change, more or less, the desire of the applicant. So we would need to hear from them on what their interests were.
Well, what I was thinking, that if it's approved as presented or as proposed, that, that in the future, you know, that between now and when the tenure runs out, that, that we can work with the applicant to allow those funds to be available, whether they, you know, including applying for them.
That would be up to them to apply at that time. I wouldn't imagine that there's a prohibition on that. The concept would be more preservation of affordable units. So based on what availability of funds existed, they could request them, so.
Thank you.
But that would, that would not need to be, and probably should not be, a part of the resolution. So the resolution as drafted and as presented to us on page 125 and 126.
Yes, so I've gone around and around in my own brain about this. So I'm going to vote for it. I initially was like, yeah, I'll vote for this. And I didn't really have much sort of appreciation for the opposite perspective. But after speaking, particularly with Councilor Payne, understanding more of the back history on this property, I understand why, you know, this is controversial to some folks. I, I do feel like we've got more focus on having developers, frankly, that we would consider good partners for us and the city, and not ones that are just going to come in and make a quick buck and move on. So the way I'm looking at this is, you know, very strictly from a sort of sunk cost perspective, the issues that happened before, whether they were the present owner or the owner before that in terms of how those properties were managed. You know, from where I stand, those are in the past. Moving forward, as I evaluate this option, just on its own terms, we're going to get seven units that do something for us in terms of affordability. And I guess four more, I think that's right, that are just units. And I've been by the space, I've looked at the lot. It's, it's very, there's not much more you could do with that spot than what they're planning to do. So I plan to vote for it, I'm happy to make a motion, unless anyone else wants to. Okay, I'll make the motion. If I can find it. Yes, I move the resolution granting a special use permit for property located on 1000 Monticello Road, City Tax Map 57, Parcel 36.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Yeah, we've, we've already discussed it, so I won't go, you know, too into it back and forth. But I will say, as a practical matter, I think we should assume, as soon as it's approved, the city has lost all leverage, and the developer is never going to apply or use greater subsidy. They're going to do what's profitable within the law, and the city loses all leverage once this is approved. But I do hear the other arguments in terms of the sunk cost fallacy. But I'm still at a place, I know the developer has told us before, the problems were with previous owners. You can look up in the daily progress in Charlottesville tomorrow. This developer acquired it in February 2019, and March 5th, 2019, is the date of the lease termination notice is sent to the residents. This will result in a net loss in affordable housing for our community. And I understand the difficulty of it, but I don't see anything to be celebrated in the developer of this project.
Any other discussion? Ms. Thomas, call the roll.
Councilor McGill?
No.
Councilor Payne?
No.
Councilor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
Motion passes three to two. American Rescue Plan Fund allocation, second reading. Mr. Rogers, any information to add since the first reading?
No, we've, we've discussed this, and we presented the allocations of the $14 million of the remaining funds, and we would ask the council pass as we submit it.
Discussion, councilors?
Where, where's the motion?
Motion's in the back, it's attached.
The resolution's page 135, literally the last page.
Got it. I'm happy to move that, unless people want to talk more about it?
No, I'm guessing I'm probably alone on this, and I swear, I'm not trying to be difficult. But I think this money is really important. And I don't, there's a, most of this is a lot of good stuff related to mental health, affordable housing, homelessness. But it's going to be at least a decade before we get this kind of money again. Every choice we make is important. And I'm not fully confident yet that the allocations for economic development, CACVb, and the Meadow Creek Trail are our best use of funds. I think those are all good projects, I think there's good things to them. But I'm not confident how we would weigh those against over $2 million more for homelessness, other housing projects that may come up, implementing the Marcus Alert system faster, or even just the Jefferson School, even just bonus pay to try to recruit school bus drivers. That's the only thing holding me up, is we don't immediately have to spend all of this. And I think we may be missing out on some more impactful investments by choosing it right now in those buckets. But I may be alone on that, and I should say, there's still lots of good stuff... But I may be alone on that, and I should say, there's still lots of good stuff, and I'm not trying to be difficult, but that is, that's what I really think about it.
I mean, the 2.4 that's left, I guess we could, that's unallocated, we could ask the city manager's office to, do we have some things we'd like to ask them, him, or them to do, in terms of some ideas we'd like them to explore? We don't have to do that now, but...
That's what it's there for.
Yeah. It sounds like...
There would be over 2 million additionally to allocate towards other projects.
Right, 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 but, yeah.
Let me just say, in response to the notion of spending, of setting it aside for the Marcus Alert proposal, first of all, there isn't a Marcus Alert proposal right now. The current situation is, of course, we've allocated $100,000 from our surplus come January for the Marcus Alert work, but we also have a problem that, you know, right now, we're being told that the county has noted that their Marcus Alert work is still years away, that, and part of the problem is that Region 10 is understaffed, and they don't have the ability to do more in this field in any case, anyway, at least not at the moment, and to the point where they've actually had to close down their Wellness Recovery Center until they can get the staffing necessary to keep it open, which we're talking about, I'm hearing perhaps January 2023. So, it's going to be certainly a year at least before any of that money is going to be...
That's just one theoretical example. I take your point, but again, perhaps there's assistance for that Region 10 program that had to shut down. There's a developer with a large amount of affordable housing that is possibly looking to sell their portfolio. Will the city have any role in that? Certainly, our homelessness services, we now have substantial expansion. I'm just saying, there are clearly other possible investments, but...
I want to clarify that the million for the economic development, that did get changed, correct? That isn't just, that is more if we see an opportunity.
You're talking about the investment, Strategic Investment Fund?
Yeah, the Strategic Investment Fund, that could be used if we saw a land acquisition that would go towards affordable housing.
Yes.
That could be used, lies there.
Yes.
Okay, I just want, I just wanted, because I thought that had changed. And I will say that what I have been, after meeting with the Visors Bureau, and this was before the award for Black Charlottesville, the work they're doing to work with minority owned businesses is that, is that next step in a lot of ways to not just affordable housing, but economic growth. And I think that's really important, that it's, that we're looking at a picture of not just affordable housing, but also affordable life. And I just, I mean, that's just...
No, and I hear you, I can, I can tell I'm going to be outvoted here, so I'll let you all move on to the vote. But one, you know, the Tourism Board received about $300,000 directly, or maybe not directly, but from the state. There's still other state money out there that they can apply for and get, I mean, is it the perception that that 300,000 was not enough, and they need an additional 750,000?
Yeah. They're also, they're, aside from just the COVID numbers, they're down additionally because hotels haven't had the staffing, and so they're artificially low because they don't have the staffing, and because the Tourism Board budget is based on the lodging tax.
Last year's lodging tax, rather.
And they're still, and they're down, not just because of COVID, but because of staffing shortages.
And Region 10 closed a program too.
I know.
I rest my case.
Okay.
So, I'm going to move the resolution, if I can bring it up again. Appropriating funding for the American Rescue Plan for eligible local activities of 14,799,565 as laid out here in the packet.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Thomas?
Counselor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
No.
Counselor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes four to one. General business, there are no items for general business discussion. Are there any other business items that we have for consideration, councilors? Anything we wish to have the city management follow up on?
Yeah, it was, I had actually written to Mr. Rogers earlier today about the Region 10 closing, and I didn't know about the details that it wouldn't be into January of 2023 that it was, and I know that that may not be confirmed or, you know, official, but if it was something that we could do, I know that we pay money into that, and, you know, if we're not getting, I don't know, six months or eight, four months out of, you know, what we pay, what's happening to that, you know, portion of the money? If it's something that we can do.
Yeah. Well, that's, that's, as I understand it, it's a staffing issue, and not specifically a money issue, though obviously there's always a point where if you increase the money enough, you can solve a staffing problem, but for whatever reason, they haven't, and they're seeing it as a staffing problem. I'll also say, while we're talking about Region 10, that we, the city council has not done what we're supposed to have done, in that we have not appointed some members to the board of Region 10. We had three vacancies back in June that we did not fill. The reason we didn't fill them was not our fault, we didn't have any applicants. So, if there are folks out there who are watching, who are saying, you know, I would like to be a part of the solution for Region 10 and mental health issues in Charlottesville and Albemarle, please apply.
Yeah, I know that we got at least one application within the last four or five days, so...
I talked to somebody about it just a couple days ago, yeah.
One of the serious issues with Region 10's funding is that Medicaid reimbursement rates haven't changed since the 80s.
Yep.
When I worked there, they are still, my team charged $83 a unit in 1999. They still charge $83 a unit. It's, the state won't reimburse, and on top of that, when, a few years ago, when it was switched to a more privatized model, the standard is for the insurance companies to deny the first application, and then there's a 50-50 shot that the service will get paid or not after that. And this, I mean, it's, my old team was a budget of about $3 million a year, and that was just my team. So, what Charlottesville pays to Region 10 is good, it's better than what we're state mandated to, but it's still, it's not one of the big contributions to Region 10, they rely on the insurance funding. And also, when the Medicaid, when Medicaid expansion happened, one of the things, one way that the state paid for Medicaid expansion was to cut the general dollars to community services boards every year. So, the non-restricted dollars got cut every year. So, mental health has been escalating, the mental health care workers who work at Region 10 have not been able to take vacations easily, because there's just not enough, there haven't been enough people through COVID, and they're all burning out too. And insurance goes up every year for them, and pay rarely goes up very much, because they're just not getting paid by the government, by the state.
Okay. I don't know that we can solve that problem tonight.
I bring it up to every time I can, to any state and federal organization I can.
All right, so, we are now at the final speaking opportunity for members of the public. Speakers will be given up to three minutes. You may join the speaker queue by selecting the raise hand option in the Zoom webinar, by pressing star nine if you have joined by phone, or by raising your hand in council chamber. We will alternate between in-person and virtual speakers. Ms. Carpenter?
Thank you for the ability to have a few final words. I want to thank Counselor Payne for his thoughts in reference to the ARP. It is what it is, I thought that there could, should be more money given to programs that actually have benefits for, you know, our city residents. We talk about the downtown mall a lot, you know, there's the 50th anniversary of this brick mall coming up next year. I think I mentioned before that I was concerned about how this is the living room of a lot of folks, and was hoping that someone with lived experience would be part of the conversations about what this, you know, space will look like during the, you know, festivities, however they are manifested. And to date, I haven't heard any conversation about that, and I think it's very important going forward that any of these things that we're doing, whether it is homeless service provision, whether it's mental health services, whether it's educational services or whatever, that the folks that have the lived experience that are impacted by or can provide information regarding these initiatives be part of the conversations, and I don't see that happening, and I'm very upset that it's not. We also talk about, you know, Region 10 programs, you know, some of that money could have perhaps gone to facilitate the hiring of more path workers, some more actual street outreach workers, because right now, according to what I'm hearing, unless you all want to, you know, contradict what I'm saying, the initiative that was going to be coming out of the fire department at one time early this summer, late spring, early summer, seems to have gotten less traction than it did about four or five months ago. So, if you're talking about wanting to make an impact for people's lives, like I think Counselor Payne said, we're not going to see this money ever again, we're not going to get this money from the federal government, and it certainly behooved us to use this money in a resource strategic way to make an impact in this community that's trying to heal, because we see that there are still a lot of issues even five years on from Unite the Right that still are creating trauma, that is still creating divisiveness, and some of this funding could have gone to address more than what it had. I do think there are some good items in this, but I think that it was, some of it was a little short sighted, even if you have that $2 million left, my suggestion would be buy property. The city needs to buy housing and figure it out, because nonprofits are not going to be the answer. They don't get enough funding, it's not out there, it's too competitive, and in the end, people, kids, elders, single moms, whatever, suffer, because we cannot address all their issues, and we have the way, we just need the will. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Is there anybody online who would like to speak to us at this point?
Yes, Mayor Snook, we have Brandon Collins.
Okay, Mr. Collins?
Good evening, city council, my name's Brandon Collins, I'm a lifelong resident of Charlottesville, have two young children and a grown child who grew up here. I tried to squeak in on the first public comment period to express my frustration with 1,000 Monticello Road, and I'm not really here to say, I told you so, but I think you've made a big mistake, Councilors Payne and McGill, I'm glad that you voted your conscience on this. It's really, you don't even have to look at the past actions regarding that property to know that this is a raw deal for the city, and I think it is really important, as you're considering affordability, to announce those numbers to the public when you're deliberating. When you look at what was proposed and adopted by y'all, you're basically looking at $1,400 a month for a handful of apartments. That's not affordable for many people in Charlottesville. Now, that may be cheap for Charlottesville these days, as the crisis has deepened and gotten worse in terms of rentals, it's still not affordable, and it's definitely not affordable to those who need it. Those who need it, who can access those, are going to be the ones who are getting either a C-SRAP payment or a Section 8 voucher. And that's where the raw deal really comes in, they set the 125% fair market rent, I assume, so that they would be able to take your C-SRAP money. That is money from the city of Charlottesville taxpayers, and what they're going to do, they're going to price it at 125% and squeeze as much money out of the city to pay for their offering of affordable housing, so that they could get an SUP that would somehow alleviate the adverse impact of their building. Now, if this was truly affordable housing, this would be a perfect situation for an SUP, where you've got a tiny piece of land, you could do infill and really serve this community. Unfortunately, y'all got a raw deal, you voted for it, and it's truly disappointing, and I would say, before tonight, if you could read over what those affordability requirements were that you just passed to the public, so we could all understand and attach numbers to those, please do so, and in the future, when you're thinking about these things, please talk about what exactly is the affordability that you're talking about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Anyone else out there?
Our next raised hand is Rosia Parker. Rosia, you're on with counsel.
Thank you, Rosia Parker, again. Yes, Mr. Snook, I would like to know what is going on with the PCRB with Bellamy Brown. I gave you the itinerary of what to look up with a violation of bylaws. You came to my home twice to hurry up and try to figure out what I was doing when it came to housing, sending you a letter, and you never followed up on the information that I gave you, even though I resigned. And also, I'm very disturbed to hear about how the signs and the different things going up for the community is not a priority. A lot of this signage should have been done three years ago in the SIA Investment Act when Kathy Galvin was on. It's still a lot of things that were supposed to have been done then that is still not done, far as the bricks being taken up about Vinegar Hill or anything. There's no type of existence of a black community there, so I think that still should be a discussion, even though it might not be a priority to y'all, but it's still a priority to the community. And also, Black Lives Matter, the way that that sign was put up, it was a very disgraceful way, and it still shows that there's racism in the city government, because why are the holes, the screws are put in the words, where it don't even be, you can't even see that it says Black Lives Matter? And there was plenty of enough holes where they wouldn't have to do the damage that the way that they did it, and why is it up under the tree where you cannot see it, under the Haven? And also, you don't even see the boulevard, and there's plenty of space to have Boulevard, B L V D. I mean, it's just a shame, and then to hear Mr. Rogers says, yeah, we have other problems that we are to address, but we're not going to address them, and you only addressed two? There are some serious issues that's going on in this community that y'all feel that there's no need for y'all to address. I don't know what type of city council y'all are, but I think it's a very disgrace to the community. And like we still saying about growth, y'all accept the apology from growth on the situations that he's done, and he harmed a black woman, and y'all still have him in there, and y'all say that y'all don't know this information? Y'all, if the community have the information, I know damn well y'all got the information, and the cities still have not apologized to the community. All y'all said was, I'm sorry. Yeah, y'all are a sorry bunch of damn people that still don't give a damn about Charlottesville. Y'all needed to get it together, and like I said, I'm back, and I'm going to make sure y'all get it together for my people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parker.
Our next speaker is Emily Yen. Emily, you are on with counsel.
Hi, my name is Dr. Emily Yen, I'm a Charlottesville resident who resides on Ridge Street. I am also a proud fourth generation union member. I appreciate city's council's progress on the collective bargaining ordinance and urge you to... and urge you to strengthen it. Specifically, I urge you to allow all non-police city employees to be able to bargain over a fair disciplinary procedure. Granting this right during collective bargaining is a standard practice in most states and will protect workers from discrimination and retaliation. I also encourage you to allow clerical and administrative employees in Charlottesville to be able to collectively bargain. At the same time, you're granting these rights to firefighters and bus drivers. These workers shouldn't have to wait at least two years to gain collective bargaining rights. I also urge you to allow workers to be able to bargain for benefits. This is a standard practice in most states, as well as in most of the collective bargaining ordinances that have been passed in Virginia. Please, please add, make these amendments to your proposal. This would be make collective bargaining a much more powerful tool to gain equity in our city. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
John Sales is up next. John, you are on with counsel.
Good evening, counsel. My name is John Sales, and I work for the Housing Authority. I wanted to get on tonight to talk about the S U P you all just approved. I think it is a raw deal for the city. The city created an affordable housing plan that talked about how many years and the level of affordability that needs to occur when you are giving additional units. The site was already a non-conforming site. So anything that was built on a site was above and beyond what they're authorized to receive. And so I just want to say, you all really need to get a plan together that identifies what you actually need to provide to get the additional density. Because right now, we're giving it away. Why, why would anyone wait for the plan when you can come down and put a proposal in front of you guys and get it approved? Because we're looking at, oh, it's more units. Well, you're, you're right, it is more units. But it's more units at $1,600 a month in rent for a one-bedroom, or $1,700 or $1,800 a month. And that's not what's needed for the low-income community that we're trying to serve and address with the affordable housing plan that you all approved. And so I think that's something that needs to happen. And I also think Nancy Carpenter hit something right on the head. You all need to buy land. But you have a housing authority that you all created to provide low-income housing options for individuals in the community. So if the goal is to buy more land, yes, do that. But do it through the housing authority that you all created to do that. So I just want to say, I support you all buying more land. And yes, it needs to be protected. There are a lot of opportunities that are starting to come up. I think there's been like three within the last couple of months of naturally affordable housing units that are being offloaded because the owners are trying to get out of that market. There's starting to be a downturn, and this is when some investors are going to hop on good deals. And we're going to lose affordable units. There were some on Seven and a Half Street that were renting at $500 a month for a two-bedroom unit. Like, you're not going to see that again. And if the wrong investor gets their hand on it, that's going to be $1,800 or $1,900 a month. And we'll never see it as being an affordable unit. Vouchers can't be used there, and that's just a wasted opportunity. So I do think we need to put the pedal down a little bit more on actually getting some firm commitments around the additional density in the affordable units. But the city also needs to be prepared to spend some money to protect some of the units that are naturally affordable, but also be prepared to buy some that are not naturally affordable to make them affordable for the next 30 to 100 years. Thank you all for letting me speak tonight. You all have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Sales.
Our next raised hand is Shelby Edwards. Shelby, you're on with counsel.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Shelby Marie Edwards. My pronouns are she/her and hers, and I'm the executive director of the Charlottesville Public Housing Association of Residents, also known as FAR. I am a Charlottesville resident, and I am born and raised in Charlottesville and a product of the Charlottesville Public City School System. So tonight, I just wanted to touch on a couple of different things. One, I wanted to thank Mary Carey from Midway Manor for her words. And I did just want to reiterate the importance of, and the appreciation of Brian Kingston and Michael Payne, who attended. Thank you so much. We look forward to the continuity of your participation, especially as we figure out what happens to Midway Manor. The other thing that I wanted to touch on, I wanted to reiterate what was said by Mr. Sales. This whole 1,000 Monticello situation, I think, will continue to be that, just a situation and not one that benefits residents. I mean, like I said last council meeting, there was a time where I lived over there, and my pay was cut 20% because of the field that I was working in at the time. And there was no one that was able to work with me at the time. And that, that was just me. And so like, we just need to make sure that when we're talking about affordable units, it's not just, oh, you know, more units are better than others. That is, that couldn't be farther from the truth. So we can't look at, you know, more housing units, you know? That's better because that increases the stock. We need to make sure that we are specifically focusing on the housing for folks that, that really need it. And Sina, I really appreciated you touching on the defining affordability point. I really look forward to seeing what you have. And like I said, I, I really appreciated you touching on that early on City Council because we have said it several times. And then the last thing I want to touch on. We need to continue to include residents in this whole police search. This is working under the assumption that we have to hire a police chief. I've already shared my thoughts with Michael Rogers. I did so last Friday. And I will continue to advocate for making sure that there is community involvement that is specific and measurable. And I will leave that there right now. Thank you so much. Have a good evening, y'all.
Thank you.
Mayor Snook, I see no additional hands.
Okay, so that concludes our last Community Matters. The only other thing left to be done is adjournment. So we're adjourned. We don't even have to have a motion. It's already on the agenda. Thank you all for coming. Thanks, those who have been watching, listening. See you in a few weeks.
Good night.